Good morning.
Good morning, Roger. Joe Kirby, La Plata County, as well as a host of other folks. We have all three commissioners, as well as Diane, our finance director, and Cheryl Rogers, our county attorney, and then we have a number of members in the audience, representative from the city of Durango, Sherry Dugsdale, who's the assistant city manager, and then we have a community member by the name of Melissa Youssef.
We have to do introductions anyways.
Oh, okay. Do we have to start? I'm sorry.
It's a new meeting.
It's a new meeting.
But he just identified, he just made the record. We don't have to, we don't have to actually do it. He's doing it.
Okay.
Yeah, we're done.
And Melissa Youssef, who's a community member, as well as a reporter from the Durango Herald.
Sir Rick, Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year, Roger.
Thanks, Roger. This is Brad Blake. We'll go ahead and get started. We already covered introductions, and I'll go ahead and hand things over to Joe to start off the conversation, unless you have anything else for Roger.
Commissioners, Roger did consult with the Long Term Finance Committee a number of weeks ago and shared his insight with them. I thought it was also important for him to have direct interaction with you, kind of debriefing from the November election regarding our mill levy, as well as giving you the opportunity to ask any questions. This conversation is important as we move forward with discussions on what we're going to be doing with the airport, if anything relative to this November's election. So I asked Roger just to join us and share his insight and recommendations.
Okay.
So Roger, with that, the board does have the election information from the county clerk in front of them, which is just a very rough document, which you've seen, that breaks it down by, you know, whether or not Durango School District area, exactly. So just to let you know, they do have that in front of them.
Great. Well, I think, you know, I'm probably gonna not say anything that's surprising. It was a very close and disappointing missed opportunity, I believe. I, as I thought about it and looked at the, you know, kind of the distribution of results, it strikes me probably about 80% of this is the clock, we kind of ran out of time, and the process through the summer and fall didn't leave a lot of time to really do an education and outreach effort to, you know, certainly the unincorporated areas outside of the city of Durango, where we lost by larger numbers. And, but to be so close with a relatively small amount of advocacy occurring, I know commissioners and some folks in the community were out talking about it, but there wasn't, you know, what I would term a traditional advocacy yes campaign. To still come that close on a tax measure is pretty amazing, and makes me think, you know, there is an opportunity to consider going back in 2016, you know, once you all, I know you've got lots of competing interests and initiatives and ideas on the table, and so that's gonna be the challenge, is you sift through what ultimately is the most important item that goes to the voters, you know, does this remain to be, you know, continue to be a top priority. I believe if the commission kept, stayed the course, and the county stayed the course, and this year focused really on educating and talking to a much broader audience about the issues at hand, and what the, what the steering committee reviewed and your long-term finance committee has reviewed, and spent some time on that, education efforts probably can get this passed. I also think if you look at turnout, it's, you know, we had about 31 or so percent turnout. You know, I'm seeing folks that are a lot smarter than me projecting we could have 90% turnout for the presidential election in 2016. And what we did find here in Denver, we ran the stock show campaign that passed. You know, the younger voter turn, you know, we spent a lot of time on social media and did some focus in that area, and actually saw a pretty interesting uptick. And we know in 16, even your presidential, that that, that demographic will turn out in larger numbers. And, you know, I think you can assume some of the, you know, more of those votes will come from the city. You know, you just start to do some, some calculation almost precinct by precinct, when you, you could take the distribution of votes this year, weigh it over an expected turnout in 2016, look at the demographics by age, and you could start to create a, a, you know, a turnout model of how this could be successful. But again, you, you know, I understand you all have to decide what the priority for 2016.
Roger, if I could just jump in, this is Gwen Lackold. When we had our debrief with a couple of members of the Long Term Finance Committee, Ken Fusco and Rich Butler, Rich said that gas prices were falling much further than he had originally calculated. He anticipated a 45% decline in natural gas prices. He's now anticipating 60%. So, speaking to need, I would say we have an ever-increasing need to address our ever-declining road and bridge fund.
Sure. When we had the discussion with the Long Term Finance Committee, we talked to, you know, I think there was some thought, well, we need to start back over and review all this. And I'm of the opinion, you've done the, you've done the base work. You've had, the finance committee has, has and continues to watch the numbers and make projections. You've had a pretty broad, what I'd say, grasp tops effort through the steering, to the fiscal sustainability committee, that you don't need to revalidate numbers. I think you need to spend, you know, just more time talking to the community about the, the long-term challenges and educating your average citizen. And I think certainly those kinds of statistics add to the story, because you're constantly updating, and it's helpful to share within real time. You know, we, as elected officials, all we can do is take the information that we have at the moment, and we're trying to make the best decisions we can. And here is the latest numbers. And I, the other thing I forgot to mention, is I think, you know, you've got, you had other recommendations, that I know you've done some work on how to, how to start having conversations around those other recommendations. I think that, currently through the year, you're continuing to show that you've taken the recommendations very seriously and are moving forward as part of that education process. You know, I just think there's a real, again, an opportunity. I don't, you know, I just think if we, if we spend the year talking to folks, that we can turn those numbers.
Roger, as you know, just before you came on the line, we did have Dee Weiser consult with the board. One of the topics we were talking about is the possibility of having more than one item on a ballot question. Do you have any feedback as to what you've seen successful in that arena, assuming that you can do it legally? What's your take on the success rate of those type of things?
So Dee is talking that you could write a ballot question that encompasses all of your, all of your issues into one question?
Well, there's a couple of caveats to that, and, and I won't go into those, but if it's debt-related, then it's a, you would have to have separate questions. And so there's some nuances to that generality that I just made.
Let's talk just about, let's focus it on airport, a transportation thing, airport plus road and bridge. That seems like that would be kind of straightforward and legal.
Well, except that airport would be debt, and road and bridge would be operations.
But we'd have to do, that just meant we'd have to have a debt side to it. We'd still...
You know, I've worked, I've known Dee for 30 years. There's no one better at this. If he can write a question that is legally sound, you know, I think a single question in front of the voters is easier than a menu. If you were to, if you were to have to say, we've got, you know, A, B, C, D, you know, one is property tax for roads and bridge, and the other's a sales tax for the airports, and then we need to bond against that, that's where you, you know, it's more challenging with the electorate. It's gonna be a tough year, because there's so, you know, Colorado is gonna be, we've got a very competitive senate race. We know the presidential race is, you know, a bit crazy, you know, we don't even know who the final candidates will be, but it's gonna be, so it's, you know, there's gonna be a lot of election clutter. So the fewer items that are in front of the voters and where we can concentrate that education and communication effort around one item, I think that's much more likely to be successful. And then it just depends on, on, you know, if it's two tax items, it probably has to be two questions. But again, that's, that's not my world. Dee would, is great at that.
Roger, this is...
I feel it's, I feel it's more about the number of items on the ballot. It's probably more challenging than if it is a, you know, one item that's crafted to capture as many things as possible.
Roger, this is Gwen. Is there any, are there any prognosticators out there saying how many questions will be on this ballot? I know, I just read an article where there will, people have submitted 11 ballot initiatives related to oil and gas. And I don't even know what other questions.
I think you'll see a lot of those fall off, but there may very well be one or two, from what I've heard. You know, there's the whole, build a better Colorado discussion about how many questions might be actually forwarded to the voters. I'm thinking it will be two, maybe three. So there's, it's gonna be a long ballot.
Yeah.
And all, and the local, the local measures will all, in all cases, will be the last thing, right? I mean, you're gonna have your federal, your state, your whatever, and so...
That's correct.
The bottom of the ballot would be where these would be placed.
And getting people to vote all the way down to the bottom of the ballot is always a challenge?
Yes, but I think that's where, if you, if you're able to settle on one question, and there's a way to legally do that, you know, you build a campaign and a whole years of, or six months of education around that, that's very focused. You know, if you had three things, then how do you start as a community really talking about three things? I mean, it just, that's, and that's the same challenge ultimately that we'll face oil and gas, and we'll face BBC, you know, they have to, you know, have to be restrain themselves and not put too many things through, because it just becomes more challenging as a, you know, campaign around if you've got five, six questions.
Well, what I, what I hear you saying makes me think that running it in 2017, whatever we run, is a better idea than running it in 2016, because I understand the issue of the number of voters, but presumably, you're saying that the main failure of the prior, of the prior effect, or the prior measure, which I've gotta say is consistent. I've had a number of people come up to me after and say, well, you know, you, there was no statement of where this money was gonna be used. Well, there was, but for some reason that wasn't something that people knew about or heard about when those opportunities were provided. So I can see how, what, I mean, what I, honestly, I don't wanna just keep running this ballot measure over and over until we get an answer we like. You know, the voters speak when they vote. And so I don't wanna just keep pounding it to them and saying, oh, they're not, you know, if we try it again, we'll get a different result that, that, you know, if they, if they don't support funding roads and bridges, that's the choice of the voter. So, but, but if we, if we say we're gonna do something for 2016, and it's at the bottom of a, you know, a seven-page ballot, we're gonna lose vote, we're gonna lose voters anyhow. So that's just kinda what's going on in my head.
You have, you're, you're always gonna have under voting at the bottom of the ballot, but I think you could make an argument that putting it up at 16 is an indication that you, you as commissioners want as many voters as possible to have an opportunity to weigh in. And you build a whole, you know, you've got the, if you, if you're moving forward with the Transportation Advisory Committee, you've got that group working, you've got a organized education effort about, you know, the needs. And if it's a single item, I think you could be very successful building a messaging platform for 16. If 17, you know, I think it, there's some more analysis of turnout numbers that, that would be helpful, but, you know, my, my gut is, you maintain momentum, and you really build on what was a pretty successful summer process, that kind of ran out of time on the education, and you're picking up, you know, it'd be very different if this failed 60-40. You know, I think, yes, I would really say, well, let's step back. I think this was so close, and it, it just the evidence, you know, empirical is there, that a lot of folks didn't know about it, didn't know the details.
Roger, Joe Kirby, is there any benefit in your minds, either on the road and bridge issue, or on the airport issue, to conduct additional polling? Would you foresee any benefit to that?
Well, absolutely, but I would, you know, I tend to think, you know, I, you know, research, you know, we believe is key to these being successful, and, and I would, I would absolutely think that is, that is important. I would probably wait till it's, you've got a little more clarity about which direction you're going. And, because I think it's very helpful to be able to test actual ballot language and understand how people feel about that. So you certainly don't have to wait till a decision is made. I think it, but you, if you've got a general consensus amongst, amongst the county and the city of a direction on, on airport and, and other items, have Dee draft a straw person ballot language so that we, you know, so that you can test that. And then you, and you can drill down and try to understand what people like and don't like, understand and don't understand around something that's, you know, a real question.
Roger, this is Sherry from the city of Durango. My question was, you were talking about a single ballot item, but I think we're talking about two. One would be a revenue measure, and then the other one would be a debt question for the airport. And so I just kinda wanted your feedback about how, if the voters the last time around didn't, or were expressing that they didn't understand where the money was gonna go, if tying those two together, even though you're adding two ballot measures, is a good thing, or do you have some thoughts on that?
You know, I'm, I'm mostly focused on the revenue increase questions. So if, if the current thinking is, might not need to go for additional revenue for the airport, it's strictly a bonding question, I, you know, I think we've seen examples all over the state where that works. You can, you know, there, we can, you can craft a discussion and a education effort around that. There would be, and so, you know, I'll, I'll add on. I mean, I think, again, research is gonna be important, and that's, if, again, as soon as it looks like, okay, we, we generally have consensus about a direction on how we're gonna approach this, then do some research with actual ballot language. If it's two questions, you know, we've seen other, you know, a increase in the debt questions packaged together, we could, you know, you can talk about that with, with, throughout a survey document and get a sense of how people feel about that. Also identify where, you know, I think these are very important. Survey's not just about, you're not trying to win the survey, and it's not, it's a snapshot in time. It's not gonna tell you if you're gonna win the election or not, but if, if it's written right, it tells you where you need to go and have more conversations with your citizens. That's what's important about it.
So if they were, this is Gwen again, if, if they were separate questions, do you have a recommendation as to combining versus two separate questions, airport, road and bridge?
As far as revenue?
It has to be, because we could, the debt has to be separate on the airport.
So they would have to be two separate questions?
There would have to be a debt question, and then it's a question of, do you combine the revenue, county, and airport, or do you keep them separate also?
Gotcha.
At least that's how I understand.
Right. That's right.
Okay.
Do you think, this is Diane, Roger. In your experience, do you see that if we went forward with the revenue increase, property tax increase for the county's road and bridge, and the county had a debt question for the airport, do you see those both as possibly passing in the same year?
If, if we, yes, absolutely. It depends, again, we, you have to have, you know, we have, we're right here, 11th of January, we've got 11 months to, or 10 months to, to have a process that really educates about the situation, and then, you know, then builds the need case, and, and explains to the average voter how, how this solves our need. And again, I think we just ran out of time. So yes, I don't think it's an impossibility at all, and, you know, we would, you would wanna do some researches on the front end of that, but you'd also wanna have a very robust education effort.
Melissa, did you have another question?
Yeah, this is Melissa Youssef. I was just gonna ask more for you, with your experience, to talk more about that education effort, and how long really, you know, you just, maybe you just answered it with 10 months, but how long we really need, and how we need about, about this thing?
Well, I mean, it's probably not quite 10 months, because, you know, you've got with mail-in ballots, you know, the election really, you work backwards from...
October 11th or something like that.
So, and I, you know, the way we would build an education, you would take the election date, work back from when ballots drop, and then work back to when the, the last day to actually certify it for the ballot. So that would be September, sometime in September. So you'd build, you know, six-month, I think, education campaign, that, that, you know, is, that kind of is interactive and, and provides opportunities for folks to weigh in and, and learn more, and it would inform then the bodies, the submission and the council, when it comes right down to making the decision. You would have that, you know, all of that process, input, discussion to, to think about before you actually move forward.
Well, Roger, it sounds like we're out of questions.
Okay, very good.
I'll, I'll just close by saying thank you very much for your work on this in last year. I agree with you. I think it was very close, and I think you're correct. We ran out of time, and for probably multiple reasons, we ran out of time, but, or, or just education that didn't get out there. So thank you for your work on it. Thank you for your time on it.
You're welcome. We'll hope to talk again someday.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Roger. Take care.
Thank you, Roger.
Yeah. Bye-bye.
Okay. Any other questions before us this morning?
I don't have any questions. Anybody?
I didn't ask Roger this, but I want to get your feedback as commissioners. It, it appeared evident to me that he was suggesting by focusing on a couple of issues, that he would not suggest going to voters with multiple items.
One question with several items. That's what I heard as well. I don't know.
Or just like, even if it was airport and roads and bridges, but that we just focus, focus this campaign and educate on just a couple of issues versus myriad of issues. That's what I heard.
Yeah. I mean, it would be very interesting to have a work session on, you know, more of just a public conversation on the decade of progress. And yeah, it'd be great to have all those things that Roger was saying. You have much more success if you go with a single question than a menu, but, you know, I would see that as a long-term project, certainly, the decade of progress.
Yep.
Well, I guess the thing that just comes to my mind repeatedly is, I, how much, I think there's just gonna be so much noise in, in the lead-up to the election on all fronts. And generally speaking, most people are more interested in elected, you know, who's gonna be my senator, who's gonna be my president, than they are in the way down on the ballot things, and especially with other ballot issues on it. It's not so much, I mean, part of it is, are you just gonna lose people because of the ranking and the order, and how long it takes to fill, it's gonna take to fill out a ballot? The other thing is, you know, let's say that, what, just as a hypothetical, there were four items for local, to, to kind of put, you know, from four to, four local items. If it's the county, they're gonna have certain, if it's countywide, they're gonna have a certain letter. Let's say it's ABC. Or it might even be like, I can't remember how our ballot came out this time, but the city's was like, B2, or ours was B2, you know, and so you're like, R2, D2, B2, B3, you know, C1. And that, that message is gonna be so hard to even get people to understand what they are. I don't know. I, it just seems to me that there's, it's more, it's, part of it is the length of the issue, the length of the ballot, the other part of it to me is, is even if you got them to look there, what, how have you educated them up to that point when they've already been dealing with education from, from candidates, 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 candidates? Then you get to ballot measures on oil and gas, ballot measures on personhood, you know, I mean, we all know what the, the mix can be. How do you say, but look at, look at what's happening here? And I don't know.
A citizens committee that runs a campaign on the initiatives. We didn't have that.
I understand that.
You know, look around the state at the initiatives that had citizens committees that ran those campaigns, won their efforts in 2015.
You're explaining how it didn't win, you're explaining why it didn't win in 2015. I'm talking about, is a citizens committee enough to get through the static and get a communications message over in this year?
Let's say 30,000 people in La Plata County decide to vote in 2016. Might be 32, might be 34. But, you know, your, your opportunities to reach those voters in a concentrated campaign are much greater than if you, you have no effort at all. But if you're educating voters from the very beginning, vote all the way down the ballot, and by the way, if we don't pass, you know, road and bridge, property tax increase in 2016, and the next possible opportunity is 2020, based on what we heard at our debrief with our Long Term Finance Committee, where does the road and bridge fund stand? I, you know, I don't know. It's, is it, is it gambling on whether or not we'll get people to vote all the way down the ballot? Or is it putting it on the ballot because we need the money? And we need to, we need to study drumbeat until it actually does pass?
Sherry, were you trying to say something?
Do you have an open commission seat? Is that gonna be on the ballot?
Two.
We're both running.
Two commission seats.
So you tend to see that that will elevate the visibility of certain issues, because those become, you know...
Part of a campaign, absolutely. Yeah.
So all of that will elevate?
I think it's a matter of perspective. You're saying it will elevate? I'm saying it's a distraction. And that's, and that, you know, I, I mean, obviously, I've said from the start, I just said again, I understand the priority of putting road and bridge on, but at what point do we, do we say, hey, people voted? I'm not convinced that in 2015, that was the year we say, hey, people voted because of the lack...
But we put it on in 2015 because we need the funds.
Absolutely. But at what point, you, we're gonna always need the funds. If we keep getting shot down, when do we say we're not gonna ask for the funds anymore? And granted, in 2015, I don't think we got a representative vote because of the lack of ability to communicate and, and the education and so on, because people were saying things, I mean, the capital improvement plan is a perfect example. You didn't say what you're gonna do with the money. Actually, we did say what we were gonna do with the money, you just didn't hear it. And the question is, why didn't you hear it? Is it because you didn't see the news, the op-ed we wrote? Is it because you didn't attend a forum?
You don't read the Durango Herald.
Yeah, but clearly, there's, there's enough people who didn't hear it, that, that the message didn't get sent out as broadly as it would have liked. And we've heard people say, I would have voted differently if I'd known that. So I understand, 2015 is not a representative year. But again, I just, you know, I have questions of whether putting on 2016 will be successful or not. And when do you say, okay, we... And when do you say, okay, we, you know, we've had a representative sample? That may be a question for later down the road, but whatever.
I think that the people in La Plata County expect us to make good decisions for them. And like it or not, Gwen makes a valid point. It's a good decision, it's a good question to put back to the voters. When the roads eventually fail, they'll say, why didn't you do something about it? When the airport eventually fails, they'll say, boy, those county commissioners sure should have done something about it. So whether it's one question, two questions, three questions, I think the people in La Plata County expect us to put forward good questions on ballots. I mean, and you're right, it's up to the voter, whether that's two years in a row or three years like it was in Bayfield. Eventually, something will have to be done, so.
Diane, have you run numbers since, probably not. It's been the holidays since our meeting with road and bridge on the 21st of December. Not road and bridge, the Long Term Finance Committee. You did have Doyle and Jim there. Just, do we have some idea of where we stand without a property tax increase with road and bridge, you know, from this year out four years?
No, I haven't for 16. We did the budget, and they had enough to operate through 16. Our analysis looked like with fund balance, they could get through 17. But it starts at that point.
Right, after 17.
Rather start going down in 17. I think that's when we'll really see the decision-making. Public services, do you?
So we really, I guess, I mean, if we're looking at 2017, if we want to give the voters a chance to get road and bridge healthy, it has to be on the ballot in 2016. Because by 2017, it's too late.
By then, you're, yeah.
We've already had a severe impact that we'll have to make up for if we wait till 2017.
Where does it come from?
No, I mean, in the.
No, I mean, in our budget, where do those funds come from? If we don't have a property tax increase, what, I mean, something has to go, right? What goes?
We'll definitely have to look at.
Public, I mean, our two biggest things are human services and sheriff's department. I mean, seriously, we start making really difficult decisions in 2017.
And frankly, commissioners, I just wanted to keep the communication going on this topic. And I know the airport discussion is going to be really beginning in earnest here later this week. And so I thought it was important that we kind of lay the foundation. I think Diane and I have some more work to do regarding future forecasts with the Long Term Finance Committee, updating those. But we also have some work to do with the county assessor to better understand what 2017 actually means for the county as well. He did some projections for us last fall, and we need to continue to update those projections so we have a clearer idea as to what 17 means. But Diane and I have talked about it on numerous occasions, and I would echo that I think we have a couple of years before the train wreck, based on what we foresee today. But I don't believe that we have much longer than that based on where we're at today.
Is that a work session kind of meeting with the county assessor? It's just you three, and then you guys decide when to come up to us with Greg's information? Or do we ask Craig to come and tell us?
We can certainly coordinate that with Craig and see what he feels. He'll have a better insight regarding 2017. But I do think that after Thursday, or even if the board is prepared today to ask staff to schedule a work session for further dialogue regarding this topic, we would certainly encourage and be open to that.
I think we have to if we're looking at a six-month campaign, working backwards from October 8th.
Well, who's the campaign? I mean, we, I don't know how we get a campaign committee.
Melissa, will you volunteer to work on the citizens committee?
I will volunteer to work on it.
We have a volunteer. I actually have a volunteer that I met with last week who's willing to work on it. Rich Butler said he would work on it. I don't know if any other members of our Long Term Finance Committee would volunteer, but I'm sure. Yeah, I agree.
We will wait for further communication from you guys on that, I guess. And I actually think that the conversation with the city will be helpful in kind of what they're seeing as far as both questions are concerned. So I guess without any further questions, Cheryl, anything to add?
We'll touch base with the Long Term Finance Committee as well and see what develops on Thursday, and then generate additional discussion with the board subsequent to that.
Fair enough.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we hit the red button?
Yeah.